Okay, welcome to this Cleveland Heights City Council regular meeting. It is June 30th at 7:30. Addie, would you please call the roll?
Cobb.
Here.
Kuta.
Here.
Larson.
Here.
Maddox.
Here.
Russell.
Here.
Petrus.
Here.
All right, we will excuse Councilman Pash. And there are no amendments to the agenda. Any questions on approving the minutes from June 2nd, June 13th, June 16th, or June 25th? Nothing here, okay, so those minutes are approved. Communications from the mayor? Not here. City administrators' report? Not here. Departmental reports? None. We have a report from the clerk of counsel.
To notify counsel, a recall petition seeking the removal of the mayor of the city of Cleveland Heights submitted to the clerk of counsel of the city of Cleveland Heights has been reviewed by the Cuyahoga County Board of Elections and has been found to contain a total of 3,845 signatures of qualified city electors. This number exceeds the minimum required under Article 4, Section 11 of the Charter of the City of Cleveland Heights to initiate a recall. Pursuant to the charter, this certification is hereby formally presented to the Cleveland Heights City Council at its regular meeting on June 30th, 2025. As required, a copy of the certification will also be furnished to the mayor in accordance with the charter. Under the charter, the mayor shall have five days from the date of this notification to resign from office. If the mayor does not resign within that time, council shall call an election upon the question of the removal of the mayor to the electors of the city. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Addie. In record time, we're at public comment. Do you have three minutes? We'll start with agenda items first and then do general public comments second. When you come up to the mic, please state your name and the street you live on. And I guess we're ready to go. How many do we have, just out of curiosity?
I did not count.
A bunch? Okay. Well, I'll start with the first bunch.
Anne Sheriff. Okay?
Yeah, yeah, you're all set.
My name is Anne Sheriff. I live at 2261 Delaware Drive, 44106. I'm a longtime resident of Cleveland Heights. Today, I'm here to ask council members to vote no on Ordinance 0632025 PD concerning the sale of the public land on Cedar Road between Delaware and South Overlook. But I'd also like to praise the city of Cleveland Heights for its wisdom and including in its planning process, the recognition that green space and parks are essential to a healthy city and healthy and prosperous residents as well. In the Focus magazine published by the city of Winter 2025, one of the important strategies is to nurture a healthy tree canopy and also that says the city will revitalize vacant lots and identify opportunities to expand green spaces in all neighborhoods. The residence groups that is opposing the sale of the public lands has been meeting with the city planning office. And we also have scheduled on July 15th, a meeting with the Environmental Sustainability Committee of the city to present our ideas on how to invest in this green space and to strike a balance among new housing, maintaining the existing housing stock, and also to ensure ample green space for residents' health and wellbeing. And finally, it's evidence-based, well-known that green space, ample green space enhances property values. And so that's another goal of keeping the Cedar Road green. Thank you. Drew Hertzig.
Drew Hertzig, Bradford Road, Cleveland Heights. Counselors, tonight, the council will be voting on many agenda items such as authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Spacetaver Corporation, a contract with ZoneCo, an agreement with the Home Repair Resource Center, a resolution to approve adopting the 2026 tax budget, and a number of other items. All measures to ensure the smooth continued operation of the city, and I'm sure they will pass in due order. At the same time, a number of city council members are very public in their support of the recall movement, which asserts that every day the mayor remains in office does irreparable harm to the city. So which is it? Are you authorizing the mayor to continue in fulfilling the obligations of his office? Or is the mayor doing irreparable harm to the city? It can't be both. But of course, you want to have it both ways. You want the administration to take care of the day-to-day operations while you maintain that the sky is falling. The irreparable harm routine is a lie, and you know it's a lie. I'd say that hypocrisy is staggering, except that we are used to such hypocrisy from you now. And speaking of the recall, federal law prohibits anyone in public office from using their position to influence the outcome of an election. So you might wish to be a little cautious in your remarks concerning the recall. But some of you, as we know, have no problem in breaking laws that govern elected officials. So I'm not really expecting any restraint on your part. Good evening.
Philip Wadsworth.
Counsel. Philip Wadsworth, Delaware Drive. I'm here to urge you to vote no on Ordinance 0632025. I know that a number of our members of our neighborhood have communicated with you, shared emails, called you. I particularly want to bring to your attention the Cedar Fairmount Streetscape Plan that was done in 2009, November 2009. The reason this is important because it recognizes the green space at the end of Delaware and South Overlook, long after 1978, when the agreement ended. And it calls out that it's important to preserve and enhance open space. It also calls out that this space could be used for a gateway sign, which is something that we've included in the proposal that we shared with you and with the city. Maps and text inside this document show this as a public green space. And Page 20 in particular calls for the future site to include development of accessible public space. So after the ascent was built, this is the only place left for accessible public space. And we think the city should continue to sort of consider developing that. Also want to bring you up to date that after the last council meeting, a group of us met with Eric, the director of Planning and Development, and we discussed our proposal for the green space in depth. He also shared with us that the development of the Parks, Rec, and Open Space Master Plan. We think the space at the end of Cedar and Delaware would be an excellent addition to be included in that plan. So if you can't vote no, please delay the vote so we can get this included. Because if it comes out that it's good use for green space, it will still be available. If you move forward with this, it's gone forever, as I expressed last time. So please vote no on Ordinance 0632025. Thank you.
Lou Mandy.
Good evening, members of the council. Mr. Hanna, President Kuta. My name's Lou Mandy. I live on Delaware Drive, and I'm also here regarding the project that Paul Volpe has presented to develop the strip between Delaware and South Overlook. Quite a meeting last time with regard to this issue. Paul Volpe came in, demeaned you, the council, and the mayor. And then after the meeting, he ran out. And now Paul Volpe is back. He wasn't able to take his ball and go home permanently. When interviewed by Cleveland.com over the weekend, he referred to us, the members of the community that are opposing this, as detractors. I can't think of any way, anything worse way to describe us. We feel that we're partners in the development and future of Cleveland Heights, and we're being referred to as detractors, meaning that we're not even part of the process. We're just annoying. Would it have been more effective for us from the beginning to be yelling and screaming and cursing at you the way he did? Because he's back, and we're just continuing to try to present something different for this project. But it was in, it's interesting that this all happened during an election year. I've listened to a number of you who are running for council, and I keep hearing about everybody loving Cleveland Heights and wanting to represent the residents of Cleveland Heights. Well, here we are. We're residents and constituents, and we're asking you to represent us. Please vote no on 0632025. Thank you.
Erin Miyoshi.
Good evening. Can you hear me okay? So I'm Erin Miyoshi. I'm also a resident on Delaware Drive. And I wrote an email this weekend, and thank you to the council members who responded to my concerns. I've kind of been sitting back, so I wanted to reach out as a parent of young children. I have a nine-year-old daughter. We live on Delaware. She has very close friends on Delaware and Overlook. And that green space is really important to us as a walking space for families of young children, because the sidewalk on Cedar is very narrow, and the traffic comes by quickly around the corner. And so we've instructed our kids to only walk on that hill. And tell us the hill, it is a green space. You know, there's shrubs that berries, there's rabbits. It's a place where we hang out and we watch the sunset. I was a little shocked, you know, thinking about city planning. That space is a critical part of Cleveland Heights. It's the gateway when you come from the west side of Cleveland, entering Cleveland Heights. And to me, it really needs to be part of a master plan for the Cedar Fairmount neighborhood. And if you think about Cedar Fairmount neighborhood, we're still waiting on a grocery store. The bookstore just closed. There's facades being repaired. And we just need a strong plan that takes into place places where people can live, they can shop, they can dine. And if you think about Van Aken, that little space where there's the rock and the kids are climbing around in front of Mitchells, people stay in Van Aken, and they go place to place. And so green spaces are critical, both to our residents but also to visitors of the city. So I urge you to vote no and to really put this into a master plan. And the one final thing is, like, we needed a clear, strong vision for Cleveland Heights. And so why I'm shocked this was on the agenda again is that at the last meeting, Volpe said, "I'm done with this city." So he gave up on Cleveland Heights. And so I'm very confused about why you would have someone that feels that animosity to our community wanting to develop the future. Thank you.
That's all I have for legislative items.
All right.
Melody Joy Hart.
Hello, I'm Melody Joy Hart. I live on Monmouth Road. I'm here tonight to speak in regard to the recall. The mayor is not on the ballot. A recall only accomplishes disruption at this point. Let's go over what happens. If a recall passes, the president of council, Tony Kuta, becomes the mayor for about three months. Now, as an executive, a retired executive, I can tell you that professional, experienced managers and directors, as a rule of thumb, it takes six months, at least, sometimes 12, to get up to speed in a new company, even on the same job, because companies differ in how they operate. So putting an inexperienced person in office for three months is ill-advised. This disruption, it's disruption for developers working in the Heights, for programs that are ongoing, and especially for staff. It's important to note that President Kuta, although he was a good teacher, has not, has no experience supervising professional employees, running department, little less than government organization. He's worked with students, interns, providing tasks, but that's far different than managing a department, organization, or professional staff. This would also be during budget season, and the budget process would have already begun to some extent. President Kuta has never been in charge of creating a budget from scratch with staff, never getting into those type of details and getting through it. Entering the process is late of September with no experience, no experienced administrator and no knowledge or experience of how to do this in detail in the department level would cause a disruptive budget process. What about complexity? If President Kuta refuses to take the mayor position, the council would appoint another person, likely Vice President Council Davida Russell. This, in effect, kind of acts like having the council appoint the mayor, because she is running for office. It gives her an unfair advantage if she gets named mayor for the interim, because people could easily say, and it could easily be marketed, "Oh, well, we don't want to change horses again, you know, let's leave her in." So, I mean, while that could be a good decision, you don't know. And the people should be the ones who actually do the vote, not the council. So let's think rationally about the disruptive impacts of having three mayors in four months. That is truly disruption. A vote for recall is just a way to express anger, but at this point, since it's so late in the term, is only a disruption. And voting against, vote against disruptive recall and let the people select their mayor in November. And also, by the way, I know when I've been in corporations, I usually was required in my contract to provide at least three months, sometimes six months notice. That was because they wanted to be able to hire someone and allow me to transition them. So whether you like the mayor or not, he has three and a half years of experience and could be helpful in a transition. Thank you.
Christopher Wood.
My name is Christopher Wood. I'm on Edgell Road. Is Cleveland Heights a racist community? My family moved from the Lakeview Terrace Housing Project on West 25th Street to an apartment on Overlook Road in 1956. Just earlier, a nearby house was bombed when a black family tried to move in. I walked to Roxbury Elementary past the mansions on Fairmount Boulevard. It was full of rich kids. And unlike my school in Cleveland, there were no black students. We moved to a duplex on Meadowbrook. The neighborhood kids went to St. Anne's and then to Cathedral Latin, or one of the many other Catholic high schools. Almost none went to the public schools. Heights was another story, almost entirely secular Jews. I played basketball, and we encountered overt's antisemitism at Euclid and Parma, where the word "Kaike" would float down from the bleachers. My teammates displayed their own prejudices when they called the players on the black teams "Schwarzes," the Jewish N-word. Despite the opposition of the real estate industry and community intolerance, black families began moving into the city, and there was a gradual white flight from the public schools. When my children were at Heights in the late 80s and early 90s, the school was about half-black. There was never real integration, however, due largely to board policies designed to retain white students. By the time my grandchildren arrived, the situation had evolved. They experienced, to at least some degree, what it means to be a minority. Their social interaction with black kids greatly enriched their lives. Public schools are the heart of community. If the well-to-do attend US and Hathaway Brown, the Catholics Ignatius in Beaumont, the Jews Fuchs Mizrahi or Yeshiva, they never get to know one another and perhaps to care for one another. Their parents have no incentive to support public education, and there is the inevitable deterioration and resegregation of the remaining public schools. The avidness with which private and sectarian schools have accepted public tax dollars shows how little they care. The situation we now have in Cleveland Heights is a textbook case of systemic racism. And even though the mayor is not here, I would like to end by thanking him for standing up to the high-tech lynching by the Cleveland Heights liberal mob.
Tom Hudak.
Tom Hudak, Bradford Road. Cleveland Heights City Council must address a looming crisis. With Mayor Seren soon to be out of office due to either recall or the next mayoral election, how will this city's mayor-hating continue? What if a recall is successful and Tony Kuta assumes the mayor's office? Can we count on the remaining council members to slander the mayor? My modest proposal will foster the mayor hatred well after Mayor Seren is gone. He features include a "resign now" poster workshop. All posters must be taken to all council meetings for the entirety of the next mayor's term. A bearing false witness protection program. Former or current office holders, including judges, can badmouth our next mayor, and Chris Quinn's plane dealer will never question their motives. The more dubious their record in office, the better. A bash-the-spouse award for the citizen who takes the most unflattering photo of the next mayor's significant other and gets it onto social media. Prize money to come from Jim Petrus's out-of-state campaign funds. And finally, council will need to create an Office of Vengeance. As we know, the current recall effort is being led by a vain loser from the last mayoral race. The Office of Vengeance will go to the vainest loser of this coming race. Looking at you, Davida Russell. I'm confident our current city council is up to the task, taking Cleveland Heights from being a welcoming place to becoming the city that welcomes hate. But wait, before I go, a quick shout-out to the potential interim mayor. Embezzlers, grifters, and the old-fashioned men and women of organized crime can't wait for the opportunity presented by having an interim mayor signing off on contracts. Thank you, mayor haters.
Melissa Wood.
Good evening. My name is Melissa Wood. I live on Cottage Grove. I would like to use my two minutes to talk about the kind of city I want to live in. I want to live in a city where people don't try to run me off the road, because my bumper sticker says "Free Palestine." I want to live in a city where the police are not sent to my house because of the "Stop Arms to Israel" sign in my yard. I want to live in a city where teachers are not investigated because they teach Palestinian history and current events in public school. I want to live in a city where when a person calls 20,000 murdered children in Gaza casualties of war, she is condemned, not celebrated. I want to live in a city where I can say "Free Palestine" from the river to the sea and globalize the Intifada and have those words be understood for what they mean. Support for equal human rights of oppressed people and adherence to international law. I want to live in a city that doesn't weaponize antisemitism for political gain. For the last 20 months, you've watched the dangerous conflation of Jew with Israel and criticism of Israel with antisemitism. This conflation results in people losing their jobs, their scholarships, their visas, being deported, harassed, and jailed. Is this the country we want to live in? If not, we have to make changes here at home. We have to laugh at attempts to use the Bible to justify ethnic cleansing and genocide. And when Cleveland Heights puts on a "Stop Jew Hatred" rally that brings people calling for the mayor to resign, together with people calling for turning Gaza to dust, we have a real problem. If it looks like a white supremacist and acts like a white supremacist, it probably is a white supremacist. We need real leaders to unpack the propaganda. We need educators, not political opportunists. And I would like to say to all of you running for office, I don't care anymore if you call me an antisemite, a Nazi, or a terrorist. I am Melissa Wood from Cleveland Heights. And for me, Palestine is a line. And where you stand on that line tells me everything I need to know about you.
Richard Goodwin.
Good evening. I'm Richard Goodwin. I live on Stillman. Counsel, I am brought here tonight by the mayor's decision to fire Jessica Schatz today, this afternoon, the city's now former communications director. Although he is not here, to the mayor, I would only say shame on you. Even though you made clear with your actions that you have no shame, that what matters most to you are your own personal interests, not those of the city, its employees, or its residents, you are unfit and unworthy to hold the office you hold. To counsel, I would say I am here as a lifelong resident of Cleveland Heights, having grown up actually coincidentally on Delaware Drive. What has happened to other employees and is now happening to Jessica Schatz is not only a disgrace brought on by the mayor's actions, but a calamity that will impact the city long after Khalil has been removed from office. In my 55 years here, I have known countless city employees of all stripes, city managers, council members, police, firemen and women, building department employees, community relations employees, ice rink managers, but the most important was my mother, who worked right next door in community relations for more than 20 years. She worked in the housing department. I know well that the heart of our city government, and I do mean heart, is not found in the mayor's office or even here in council's chambers, but can be found in the cubicles and desks throughout this building. It is out in the police cars and fire stations and in the cabs of city service vehicles. It is the employees of the city who bring the idea of city government to life and make it real for the citizens every day in seen and unseen ways. I am grateful for all the council has done to hold the mayor accountable, and I applaud the citizens' effort to do so as well through the recall vote. This is not politics, this is accountability. In closing, I will only ask the council continue to do all that it can to protect and honor our city employees, because to be clear, city employees do not work for the mayor. They work for the city, for the residents. And many do so because they are passionate about the ideal of Cleveland Heights. Thank you.
James Bates.
James Bates, Grosvenor Road. Fellow residents of Cleveland Heights, Mayor Seren says this recall isn't about ethics, not about performance, that it's all just political theater. But let's be honest with each other. We know better. This recall is being driven by, it's not being driven by ambition or misinformation. It's being driven by a pattern of failed leadership, repeated blind spots, and the clear erosion of trust between Cleveland City, Cleveland Heights City Hall and the very people it serves. Let's talk about the 2025 budget. Mayor Seren is trying to frame criticism of his budget process as a coup attempt. This is absurd. What people are actually asking for is transparency, collaboration, and responsible fiscal planning. Instead, the mayor has tried to consolidate control, shutting out key stakeholders and ignoring the basic principles of open government. This isn't about who the next mayor will be. It's about ensuring that the city's budget isn't used as a parting gift or a political chess piece. It's about protecting public dollars and preparing for transition with integrity, something his actions have repeatedly failed to demonstrate. And what about unprecedented staff turnover under his administration? We've seen a revolving door in key positions. That's not normal. That's not progress. It's instability. It's burnout. It's a reflection of a workplace culture where employees feel they are not properly communicated with, confused, and unheard. That's not just anecdotal. It's been reported, documented, and echoed by those who've left or been pushed out. Mayor Seren wants us to believe that he's being attacked unfairly. No one is inventing these problems. These are real, measurable leadership failures, from how the administration mishandled the presence of his spouse in City Hall, to the disarray in critical departments, to the tone-deaf dismissal of public concern as drama. He says letting the council president step in as acting mayor is dangerous and undemocratic. Let me be the one to remind you that Tony Kuta, as well as everybody else here, was duly elected by the people as members of council, and that the city charter clearly spells out the line of succession in the event of a vacancy in the mayor's office. What's truly undemocratic is trying to scare voters out of using their constitutional right to demand better leadership. What's undemocratic is telling us to wait until November while the House keeps smoldering. Mayor Seren, whose absence is emblematic of his leadership style, should know that leadership is not about clinging to a title. It's about earning the public's trust and honoring it through action. And right now, that trust is broken, not because of political rivals, but because of his own decisions, missteps, and refusal to change course. So let's stop pretending this recall is about politics. It's about competence, stability, integrity, values Cleveland Heights deserves and values this administration has consistently failed to uphold. To my fellow residents, this is not chaos, it's democracy. The right to recall exists for moments exactly like this. We're not tearing anything down. We're standing up. We're saying we expect more, and we won't be shamed into silence.
Susan Wood.
Oh, my name is Susan Wood. I live on Edgell Road. The self-importance, gloating, and hatred in this room is as oppressive as the current heat wave we have. I've lived in Cleveland Heights almost my entire life. I went to school here, raised my children here, my grandchildren, most of them here, have been here and have gone to school here. The idea that this is a progressive city is a lie, and it has been laid bare these last few months. This campaign against Mayor Sarin is so ugly, the ugly aggressiveness of the recall signature gatherers repulsed me, as though no other opinion could be possible. Why this hate? Why this need to destroy a person, his livelihood, his future? It is so ugly and brutal and vindictive. And then this campaign culminates in some hideous YouTube video that was forwarded to me this past weekend. Truly disgusting. Mayor Sarin is not running for reelection. Who takes over? And thank you, Melody, for your comments here about some interim stuff. You have experience, you know. Who takes over? One of you who has been unable to work with him during his term? One of you who we learned from the June 25 emergency special council meeting is hiring an outside law firm to defend yourself with city funds? What do you need that for? You know, Cleveland Heights is not the center of the universe. Our world is going up in flames, both nationally and internationally. Everything is on the table for destruction. You should be out on the streets protesting that.
Eileen Ramerman.
Hello, I'm Eileen Ramerman, and I live on Rutherford. I was going to address these comments to the mayor, so just listen as though I was surprised but not that he's not here. Anyone who thinks that those of us who were obtaining signatures for recall were part of a racist, angry mob with a hidden agenda are mistaken. No one found joy in doing so. Having said that, we all had some thought-provoking and emotional conversations, including with people who had strongly supported your candidacy, but now feel let down, disillusioned, and angry about many instances exhibiting a lack of discretion and poor judgment. These include no explanations or apologies to employees who felt threatened by your spouse in their workplace, not her workplace, their workplace. No apologies to a highly regarded member of our planning commission for ugly antisemitic comments made in a group text that you were part of. No apologies to the Orthodox community for those same ugly remarks. No good reason for why you would need to plug your laptop into any location in City Hall other than your office. No apology to council or to your community for the vile statement you made about not being anyone's Negro when our council president was simply doing his job by checking on your well-being when you vanished from your workplace and abandoned your responsibilities for several days. No apology for constantly making everything about race. You may not know, but this is Cleveland Heights, and we really don't care that you are black. Lack of discretion and judgment have been sorely lacking in your performance, which makes today's news even more difficult to understand. In yet another high-profile news report this afternoon, we learned that communications director Jessica Schantz was fired. Your statement attached claimed that in part, her firing was due to a lack of discretion and judgment. How is it that our communications director is being held to a completely different standard than that to which you hold yourself? Mayor Sarin, resign.
Karen Lash.
First, I'll start out by making two statements. One is that it's disgusting and repulsive that our mayor couldn't be here to get his recall presented to him, but I'm not, I'm somewhat not surprised. And also, I'll just make another comment that there's a lot of scary people that live here. This was to be addressed, of course, to the mayor. Our city is in such a sad state, and we have only you to thank for that. We elected you with high hopes for how our city was going to leap forward. Instead, this is what we got: someone incapable of properly managing a city and its most valuable asset, its employees. Instead, we got a dictator who obstructed communications between the council and directors and precluded them from getting the information they needed to do their jobs effectively, allowed his wife to cause chaos and a terribly abusive and uncomfortable environment for staff, someone who lies or misconstrues facts to his benefit, a man who hasn't taken responsibility for any of his or his wife's actions, completely failed at preparing a budget for 2025, forcing a council member to develop a draft budget, and necessitated hiring an outside CPA firm to assist the council in preparing an accurate budget, conveniently omitted the fact that he had a key fob that would give him access to the Law Department when he stated in a council of the whole meeting that his key card would not gain him access to the Law Department, and quite likely has committed a felony, to name just a few issues. But other than that, he's done a great job. It's obvious that you have no shame, he has no shame, and is totally delusional, but the damage he has done is extreme. And now is the time for you to go. The citizens of this city have spoken very loudly and very clearly, "We want you gone now." You are doing nothing but further harm to this city, and we deserve the ability to start cleaning up your mess now. Just leave.
Matthew Carey.
Guys, can't do that. Go ahead. Good evening. My name is Matthew Carey. I live on Overlook Road, together with my two-year-old son and my wife, who is pregnant with our second child. I previously lived on Bellfield Avenue and cared deeply about this neighborhood and the city, and that's why I'm here to voice my strong support for the proposed three-unit housing development on Cedar Road. This is an extremely modest and entirely appropriate proposal, a small-scale residential development on a major commercial corridor on a lot that currently sits vacant. It's across the street from an eight-story mixed-use building in an area designed for foot-traffic density and vitality. Most nearby buildings have street-level retail and thousands of cars pass by each day. To suggest that this site should remain empty or be transformed into a tiny, underutilized park is frankly not serious urban planning. Jane Jacobs argued in her seminal work in urban planning, "The Death and Life of Great American Cities," that parks are not automatically beneficial to a neighborhood. Without the people, homes, and street-level activity to support them, they often become, in her words, "dreadful liabilities and vacuums of menacing emptiness." Let's not turn a vacant lot into a failed park, which few will use and will need to be maintained by all the taxpayers of Cleveland Heights forever. Let's build something that actually brings life to this corridor. To demonstrate this, I'd like to call your attention to a natural case study, the green space just across the street to the west of the new Edwin's Restaurant. As a local resident, I rarely see anyone using this space despite it being less than 100 feet from the vacant lot under consideration. Is it really worthwhile to spend the money to landscape the vacant lot on Cedar and add another liability to the city's books, which will be there forever, while also denying the city the increased tax revenues from new neighbors moving in and the increased economic activity that their spending will bring, just to have a redundant second lawn across the street from the existing lawn by Edwin's? Furthermore, the neighborhood, the neighbors who are so horrified that someone might actually build a house near them will not lose access to anything because they can still enjoy the lawn near Edwin's. We cannot allow a vocal minority to hijack the future of the city, saying "not here" while offering no real alternatives is just a way of saying "not ever." This city needs more housing, it needs investment, it needs people, and it needs elected leaders willing to act in the interests of the entire community, not just a handful of petty tyrants who want veto power over land that could benefit the entire city. We cannot criminalize the construction of new housing in Cleveland Heights. I want to reiterate that what is being considered is perhaps the least disruptive imaginable use, a three-unit housing development on a major commercial corridor across the street from an eight-story mixed-use structure. This would be the least intense use on the street, this would not meaningfully impact neighbors' property with increased traffic or noise. The site is currently a vacant lot, which the NIMBYs have proposed turning into a redundant park across the street from an existing lawn, which already no one uses, at a time when the city is becoming an increasingly unattractive place for people to invest millions of dollars of their own private money. If, I want to put it to everyone in the room, if not here, where? If not now, when? Thank you.
Jason Davis.
Jason Davis, 2313 Lee Road. Thank you, members of council, for your, you allowing me the time to speak on this important issue. I recently had an experience at Cumberland Pool that has troubled me deeply and that I simply can't let go. My daughter Olivia is four years old. With swim season just beginning, my goal this summer was simple: have fun and help her build confidence in the water. But on our Sunday, June 22 visit, lifeguards were enforcing rule number one: no flotation, including U.S. Coast Guard-approved life jackets and no pool noodles. We had brought our own Lifevest, one of the newest designs gaining traction for early child swimmers. Despite the pool owning pool noodles, the lifeguards told us that they weren't allowed in the preschool lane, even while older children and adults use them freely. My daughter clung to me and said, "I'm scared, I'm scared, don't let go." It cut me to the core. Neither of us was having fun. It brought back my own childhood water trauma, the very thing I was trying to prevent. In fact, banning, to be honest, I didn't check the rules ahead of time. I never imagined that U.S. Coast Guard-approved life jackets would be banned. To me, it seemed unimaginable. In fact, banning them runs so far against national guidance that I worry it presents both just, not just a safety issue, but a legal liability for the city. The American Red Cross and the YMCA both recommend or require life jackets for weaker non-swimmers. And in just two weeks, the consequences have been, have already become real. An incident reported, report has, was filed after a five-year-old fell into the pool and required rescue. If this child had been at the YMCA in Cleveland, they would have been required to wear a life jacket. And in my opinion, if that child had been wearing one, a life jacket rescue may not have been necessary. Lifeguard rescue should be an emergency last resort, not a policy-mandated first-line of defense. This is a deeply serious safety issue, and it speaks to a broader truth about our city. We must modernize while preserving what makes our community great. We can have a 120-year-old pool with 2025 safety policies. When we say "all are welcome," we mean that swimmers and non-swimmers can float with dignity, not just, not one where the message is "learn to swim," or else. When I raised the issue of the life jacket ban with pool manager Michael Seaman, he told me, "I don't think we can get it done by the season." The casual nature of that response was unacceptable to me, so I got to work and put the full weight of my particular set of skills behind this cause. Today, I submit this statement of deep concern alongside a petition calling for the immediate modernization of the Cumberland Pool rules to reflect national guidance, or at the very least, allow U.S. Coast Guard-approved life jackets. I'm heartened to report that in just eight days of this effort has yielded a commitment from our new Parks of Rec, Parks and Recreation Director, Mr. Andre Gonzalez, to fully modernize pool rules, in his words, "with plenty of time left to enjoy the season." I appreciate this commitment, but I have asked for self-imposed deadline, which he has declined to provide, citing multiple departments involved. Let me be clear, I will be a proactive stakeholder, and I will be relentless with anyone who delays the process of keeping children and our community safe.
That's all we have.
Hey, Jason. Jason, I just wanted to say to you that we did receive a memo from Director Gonzalez saying that it would be like, he didn't commit to a date, but he did say likely next week he would, he would, and this was just today, that likely next week there would be a decision on that. And thank you to everybody. We want to hear from everybody, we want you to always be comfortable here. You know, controversial is okay, everybody behaved well, we do appreciate that. We're going to move on with actually a pretty modest legislative agenda today, if I can get to the page. So the first one, four are for first reading for consideration for adoption. Eddie, go ahead.
I have resolution number 135-2025 on first reading. A resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Space Saver Corporation through the Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing Program for the provision of new lockers to be installed in the police department's locker rooms, repealing in its entirety resolution number 101-2025, and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure. Introduce the mayor, Sarin.
So moved.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. And just so you know, we did discuss all these very thoroughly in committee of the whole. Go ahead.
Next, I have resolution number 136-2025 on first reading. A resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a contract with the Zone Co. to assist in updating the city of Cleveland Heights sign regulations and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure. Introduce the mayor, Sarin.
So moved. Second.
All right, any discussion?
President Kuta.
Yes.
I would like to say that this is, seems like a minor piece of legislation, but updating our outdated and inconsistent sign regulations, it makes sense. I appreciate that the proposal from Zone Company includes, on page 14, they will assist staff through the adoption process, so there'll be training involved. The proposal outlines on page 15, a plan to engage the staff and the community. Signage is becoming increasingly important as the city strives to make all feel welcome and safe, be they residents and/or visitors. I support this legislation wholeheartedly.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Well, I just want to say, in addition to the outdated, some places there just are no signs when you need them on Cedar and Lee. I think if you're not from here, you don't know that parking garage is back there, so I'd be glad to see something saying parking, free parking garage, you know, free parking this way. Anyway, all in favor of this legislation?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes.
Next, I have resolution number 137-2025 on first reading. A resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with the Home Repair Resource Center Program Management Services for the Cleveland Heights Down Payment Assistance Program and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure. Introduce the mayor, Sarin.
So moved. Second.
All right, any discussion? I just want to quickly say on this one, this is from the exterior repair program that I authored, I don't know, it's like a year and a half ago. I am so pleased that this is going gangbusters at the Home Resource Repair Center because the reason we're reallocating, or not reallocating, but allocating in addition, additional monies is because people are taking advantage of us, of this program. People are moving into Cleveland Heights and using this loan assistance to gain homeownership, and I am all about homeownership. All in favor of this legislation?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. The next one.
Next, I have resolution number 138-2025 on first reading. A resolution approving the petition for the adoption of a Public Services and Improvements Plan for the Cedar Fairmount Special Improvement District. Introduce the mayor, Sarin.
Mr. President.
I need a motion to suspend the rules.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules.
You're right on time. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. All in favor of, any discussion on that? All in favor of suspending the rules?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the rules are suspended. And then next we vote, right? Do we have a motion?
I'm sorry, mic wasn't on. I'd like to make a motion and we pass this resolution tonight. Second.
All right, any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. On to second readings.
I have resolution number 118-2025 on second reading. A resolution approving the adoption of the 2026 tax budget and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure. Introduce the mayor, Sarin.
So moved.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that motion passes. Fourth readings.
I have ordinance number 063-2025 on fourth reading, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a real estate purchase agreement for the sale of certain vacant real property located on South Overlook Road and Cedar Road, consisting of approximately .54 acres, and identified as permanent parcels numbers 685-24-001 and 685-24-033 in Cuyahoga County Records, and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure. Introduce the mayor, Sarin.
So moved.
President Kuta.
Is there a second? Yes. I need a second first, before we do discussion. All right, hearing no second, second, is there another motion?
Thank you, President Kuta.
You're welcome.
At this time, I would like to make a motion to postpone indefinitely, let just, excuse me, ordinance number 063-2025.
All right, that has been motioned and settled. All right, that has been motioned and seconded. Any discussion? Councilman Cobb?
I got to go first.
Well, you don't have to.
For me, the problem is not with this development, because I do believe that the highest and best use for that property is a residential development. The problem is with the process that we used, that caused the public to believe that we weren't being transparent and upfront about the city's intention to develop that property. The gentleman that spoke earlier, I think, sort of summarized best about the use of that property, but we needed to tell the residents that before we suddenly sprung this on them. And I hope that we'll correct this in the future and that we get ahead of this, because frankly, we, you know, we lost, I believe we lost the support of the community in the process that we used here.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other comments? Yes, Councilwoman Larson.
I would just like to say that I feel strongly and agree with Councilor Cobb that this could be a developed property, but the community was not adequately engaged and not formally engaged for this project, and that is why I made that motion.
Councilwoman Russell.
I solely agree with Councilwoman Larson, Councilman Cobb. I was not happy with the process. The residents spoke loud and clear regarding the process, and once we investigated the progress, the process, some things did not turn out like it should have, and we wanted to make, we need to make sure that the process that we do far as engaging the residents, that is, everyone understands it at all times. Now, I am not, and I'm just going to be very honest, I am not for a park there. I think it's dangerous, but I am for some type of development there. But right now, it's the process. We have to be able to trust the process and everybody understands it. Thank you.
All right, any other comments? Councilman Petrus.
Thank you, Mr. President. I agree with Councilman Cobb that the highest and best use of that property is a residential development, but to echo what has been shared by other people, I agree that the process was not what it should have been. The administration, in my view, hung Mr. Volpe out there to dry, and so I think that they should have done a better job at getting out there, talking with the neighbors, trying to listen and learn from them, and unfortunately, that did not happen in this case. Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome. I don't have much to add to that. I certainly don't think the process was all it could be. We did get a lot of mixed messages, and I am also not for putting a park there, but I hope that there's a lesson learned here, because we do want developers to come to Cleveland Heights, and we do want to promote homeownership. We need to be, we need the administration to be out there being leaders in the neighborhoods and making sure that people are engaged at the beginning of the process, so they don't feel like this is getting sprung on them. But I want people to realize, because I heard people say this to council, "Oh, this is a done deal." Well, no, it wasn't, and they never are. They never are until we vote, but I am going to support postponing this indefinitely. Yes. Well, I, all right. Addie, why don't you go ahead and do a roll call vote?
Cobb.
No.
Wait, the.
To postpone indefinitely.
Yeah.
Okay, so this is to postpone indefinitely. So I think if you want to postpone indefinitely, I would say that would be a yes vote.
And I'm saying no.
Oh, no to postponing it.
No to postpone.
Okay, got it.
Kuta.
Yes.
Maddox.
No.
Larson.
Yes.
Russell.
Yes.
All right, that's three.
Did not pass.
So it did not pass. All right. Oh, yes. Okay, let me ask the law director, if somebody wants to correct their vote because they misunderstood what they were voting for, could they do that? I mean, I certainly can't make that decision.
That motion failed.
Yeah.
And there was no second.
Move again to postpone indefinitely, which, I don't know if that was explained, that means that the measure is removed from council's agenda essentially permanently.
Councilwoman Larson, do you want to?
Can I ask the law director a question?
Yeah.
So, law director, what was the effect of the three-to-three vote, Dan? And there wasn't a second to the original ordinance reading?
Three-to-three vote was a failed motion, so it's annulity.
Okay, and there was no second to the introduction?
To the adoption?
Yes, to the adoption.
Correct.
So it can't go forward, right?
What can't go forward?
Well, if there was no second for it originally.
Motion to adopt cannot go forward, correct. It failed for lack of a second.
Okay.
The next motion failed for lack of four votes, which is the minimum required to adopt. If you want to give me just a moment, let me make sure what the procedural mechanism is, mechanism is for a do-over.
Sure.
And that is what you're asking, correct? Okay, I'll take that as a yes.
Proceed. Mr. President.
Okay. So the mechanism would be to first make a motion to reconsider. The motion would need to be made by somebody who voted no. The typical rule is that somebody from the prevailing side needs to make that motion, and you were a tie, so that's the part I was uncertain about. So somebody who voted no would make a motion to reconsider. You would need a second. If that motion is successful, then you would, again, have a motion to postpone indefinitely.
You would have to make that motion if that's what you want.
Right now, what is the status of the legislation if we leave the vote as it was? It just remains?
Yeah, it hasn't left your agenda. It hasn't been acted upon.
And it sort of, it essentially will come back up in the future agenda.
If council's not certain that it wants to kill it, it could also take up a motion to table, and then it would be there, but it is still susceptible of being brought up again, so it doesn't really provide finality or clarity to the developer or to anyone else.
Just about to ask you, right, it's just kind of floating out there until we make a decision, so it doesn't give them clarity on how to move forward either way.
You guys can't really, you guys can't really have this kind of, Mr. President, you can't be talking secretly.
Mr. President, for clarification, either one of the three individuals who voted no needs to motion to reconsider, otherwise we need to move on. Is that my understanding, Mr. Law? Thank you.
Yes. Madam Vice President, again.
No, we can't.
You can't chatter.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All right, any discussion on the motion to reconsider? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed to reconsidering? All right, that motion passes. Councilwoman Larson, would you please restate?
I make a motion to postpone indefinitely, Ordinance 063-2025.
All right, is there a second? All right. Any more discussion? All right, we'll do a roll call vote again.
Petrus.
Yes.
Maddox.
No.
Larson.
Yes.
Russell.
Yes.
Cobb.
No.
Motion passes.
Yes, the motion passes.
All right, thank you. All right, we're on to committee reports.
President Kuta, I just have a short one.
Oh, yeah, sure, go ahead.
Okay. The two committees I chair, Finance and Municipal Service and Environmental Sustainability, will next meet in August. I'm working with Addie to get those meetings scheduled. Thank you very much.
That's what I like. Councilman Cobb?
Yes, I have a committee report. Before our meeting this evening, the Administrative Services Committee met, and we went over several pieces of legislation, and I'll just go through these real quickly. The mayor had previously introduced an ordinance, amending Chapter 105, to provide a section that would have rules for city emails for, originally it was limited to council and the mayor. I have made some changes to that proposed legislation, expanding it to include city employees and contractors. So I'm going to ask the law director to review those changes for form, and I'm going to seek to have that passed at our next city council meeting. I also drafted and introduced new legislation to Chapter 105 to add Section 105.04 to prohibit the review or access of city email accounts of employees or elected officials without consent or lawful approval pursuant to the Ohio Public Records law. I believe this legislation is necessary because the mayor has been reading the city council emails. I don't know any place else where you have elected officials reading other elected officials' emails. Highly improper, and that's why I've drafted that legislation. I've also added another amendment to Chapter 105 to add Section 105.05 to prohibit the use of city social media accounts and email systems for political messaging and limiting their use to official informational purposes. If any of us have been receiving any city email blasts over the last few months, I don't think that what we're receiving is official informational purposes, and I'll just leave it at that. And then finally, I have drafted legislation to amend the current Chapter 121.05 rules and regulations relating to the mayor's authority over city property, and I've added a section there that will give city council oversight over any decisions that are made concerning the control, care, and use of all city property. What prompted this was my understanding that a surveillance camera has been installed within the law department hallways to view who is coming and going out of the law department. I think that was done in direct retaliation for the law department asking the chief of police to review whether the leaving of that laptop in the law department was an issue or a problem. That's all that I had.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other committee reports? All right, we'll move on to old business.
Mr. President, as we're talking, we've been working through something this evening, all evening. In fact, Resolution 097-2025 for Myers Manor Transitional Living Facility, this is the homeless women and children's project. I know they came tonight with the expectation they were going to be on the agenda. However, we had discussed in Finance Committee, having a conversation about where we would get the allocated funds from, and then they would come back, so there seems to be some confusion on that. And so I wanted to bring it back up tonight, just so we could discuss where that legislation might be discussed next, so we can get that answer. And so I wanted, while we were here tonight, to see if Councilwoman Larson, do you recall if we kept that in committee or if we sent it back out, or were we, is it in committee where we're waiting for the allocation?
We agreed to send it back to council, and we asked with the agreement that we were going to get Director Hairston to tell us which fund to use for that $100,000 ask.
That's what I thought.
I didn't get the response. I did not get a response.
Until we get that as a council, Addie won't add it back until, because she doesn't have enough information to be able to do that.
And Addie's tried, isn't she?
Correct, and on 6/25, I did get an email from Director Hairston saying the mayor will provide the funding source, and he was going to consult with him, but I have not heard anything since.
Okay. So then, right now, it's back in committee to hold. Then I just wanted to make sure that's where it was, so once we get that answer, we can move forward, because I know someone needed to reach out to them. I wasn't sure where we were in that particular process, and when I saw him tonight, I realized he had to have been here for a reason, but he stated he was advised that we would have rolled through this part of the process by tonight, and so I just wanted to make sure we had some kind of answer for him.
Well, I'm glad you brought that up. Law Director, I wanted to ask you, we can't pass any.
I'm sorry, I said Myers Manor's Prentice. I'm sorry about that.
Yeah, we can't pass any legislation allocating $100,000 without, I'm talking about the legal aspect of it having to be, the funding source has to be in the legislation. Okay.
Or otherwise provided for.
All right, thank you. Any other old business?
Along with those lines, I just want to make sure, based on what, I don't know if there was a date needed for that, the funds, and based on our scheduling, what that looked like and how we wanted to handle it, if there was time coming back, then that was part of my concern.
Yeah.
Oh, they need, you, do you know what there, if they had a deadline?
Oh.
So if it's not there, though, that's it, that July 7th will be the cutoff until August, it looks like, when we go?
I'll try to reach out.
That's what I was, I was just trying to make sure that we weren't screwing up the timeline with that, because it doesn't leave much time. Okay, thank you.
I'll reach out.
Okay.
Unless Addie can get the information.
All right, any other old business? New business? Yes, Councilwoman Larson.
I would like to just speak to the Cumberland Pool safety situation. Thank you for raising the issue. I am very happy to hear that Director, and we do know that Director Gonzalez is working on it, and that I expect something shortly. This, another policy that needs to be updated and made modern, and also to give our kids a chance to, as you wanted to have, fun in the water, so thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Any other new business? All right, now we're down to council member comments. Yes, Councilwoman Larson.
About five weeks ago, I started hearing about petitions that were being circulated to recall Mayor Sarin. I talked to. to recall Mayor Sarin. I talked to some of the circulators regarding their rationale for this recall. They referred me to the petition itself, which states, quote, "The undersigned have no confidence in Mayor Sarin's ability or willingness to conduct city business, lead city hall, and execute the mayor's duties in accordance with the city charter." The specific reasons for the recall are also listed on the petition, and they include: "Failure to submit timely financial audits to the state of Ohio," "Extremely high staff turnover," "submission of an incomplete 2025 budget," "An EEOC complaint," "HR complaints," "And employee reports of a hostile workplace." The listed reasons for the recall are factual. I personally remain especially concerned about the morale of our city's employees. Do they feel safe and know how to ask for help if they do not feel safe? Citizens circulated these petitions according to the process set out in the city charter of Cleveland Heights. Per the charter, quote, "Section 111 in Section A, the people reserve unto themselves the right to recall and remove the mayor from office. As members of council, we are bound to follow the processes laid out in the charter. That is why we were presented with a certified copy by Council Clerk Ballister this evening. This is what democracy looks like." Thank you.
All right, you're welcome. Any other council comments? Yes, Councilman Cobb?
Yes, earlier, someone said that this recall was destroying the mayor's livelihood. Well...
To Coram.
Today, the mayor destroyed the livelihood of our communications director when he fired her, and then replaced her with another employee who had circulated a petition earlier in the month in support of the mayor and stating that there wasn't a hostile work environment. I, I can't say how inappropriate the circulation of that petition was in city hall, where the employees are going to feel naturally under some pressure to sign it when the mayor controls their salaries within the salary grade, determines promotions. I think if we had an HR director, an HR director would have said that was a totally inappropriate thing to do in any workplace, but recall that a month, six weeks ago, when we wanted to bring in an HR professional to help the city, the mayor wasn't interested in doing that. That's all I have.
All right, thank you. Any other council comments? All right, so, President and council, we've passed two resolutions recently. One is loss of confidence in the mayor. That was a six-one vote, and then more recently, we passed a resolution that said that we needed to, and, and this was a seven, or I'm sorry, it was a six-nothing vote, with a seventh councilperson signing on to the legislation, and that legislation called for an investigation to the incident where the, there was an allegation that the mayor went into the law department, hid his laptop computer, and left it there during a period of time when, first of all, he said he didn't have access, and secondly, when a person who had an altercation with his wife was being interviewed. And we also asked, and you can only do this in resolutions, you can only ask, we asked that no personnel moves would be made that could be considered retaliatory, and of course, that perhaps may have happened, even though we did put that in the resolution. These communications that go out, I remember I gave the, I don't know if some of you were here a couple weeks ago, I gave like the definition of gaslighting, which basically makes you just doubt the truth that you actually know with your own senses and can be verified. And that's what I see in some of these communications. You know, we're supposed to like not doubt what we read in a report or whatever, and, you know, I'm sorry this stuff keeps going out. I see emails from people saying, "Take me off your email list, mayor. I don't want to be on it anymore." I've never seen anything like that before, never. But we're seeing that now. Sorry this stuff is happening. We're just, we're going to be able to recover from this. We do have a meeting on July 7th. We kind of reinstated that meeting. I hope you, some of you or all of you can attend. This meeting is adjourned at 8:46.